We're very grateful to you for the请求你做了的请求 over the short German which was to produce a copy of the judgment Judge Roberts in the Champion case. We're very conscious that that is under appeal. But we thought we'd like to have a look at what the circuit judge said. So if we could have, I assume Lord Fox has got some hard copies. Perhaps the Usher could hand those up. What we thought we'd do is we'd ask you to carry on where you stopped. And then if you want to say anything about Champion, come back to that at the end.
Well, with a division of responsibility, what I've decided if it's acceptable for court to do is I'll finish my submissions. And if anything arises on Champion, perhaps my lady junior, Mr Stagger, wasn't actually in the case.
He was.
So he may yet be properly with the lordships.
Well, we know there's an appeal pending. Okay, so right.
I was going to come briefly to Robinson, which is at tab 18.
Yes, and we have read, at least I have. I read Tyndall, which I hadn't read.
Right, that's helpful, which means I can very much just point to a couple of paragraphs. Robinson, a decision of the Supreme Court in 2018, page 604. It was the relatively frail old woman who was knocked over in the course of an arrest. Did the police owe her a duty? And the holding says at 604, "The police generally owe a duty of care in accordance with the ordinary principles of the law of negligence, unless statute or the common law provided otherwise. No general rule they were under such duty of care when discovering their functions of preventing investigating crime. That applying those principles, the police might be under a duty of care to protect an individual from danger of injury which they themselves had created." One of the classics. "And in the absence of circumstances such as an assumption of responsibility, they were not normally under such duty where they had not created the danger of injury, including injury caused by the acts of third parties." So that's the kernel of the decision. We say that's helpful. Then if I can take the report to 614. This is a passage which we have marked, applying the Caparo approach. There's a reference to Little Brown, Angus and Ed Barrett. And having considered that, at paragraph 27, Lord Reed says, "It's normally only in a novel type of case, where established principles do not provide an answer, the courts need to go beyond the principles in order to decide whether a duty of care should be recognised." And if we go to paragraph 29, this really takes up a submission that I made at the outset. "Properly understood, the Caparo case achieves a balance between legal certainty and justice. In the ordinary run of cases, the courts consider what has been decided previously and follow the precedents. And it is necessary to consider where they should be departed from. In cases where the question whether a duty of care arises is not previously been decided, the courts will consider the closest analogies in the existing law with the view to maintaining the coherence of the law and the avoidance of inappropriate distinctions. They will also weigh up the reasons for and against imposing liability in order to decide whether the existence of a duty of care would be just and reasonable in the present case. However, the court is not required to consider an extension of the law of negligence. All that's required is the application to particular circumstances of established principles, governing liability for personal injuries." Now, in Poole, of course, this is referred to specifically the need for coherence. And it is our case that, and I appreciate this is a contested space as it were, that Poole is sufficiently clear that it's binding on this court and that it is not appropriate to look at every single case and say, well, there are minute differences if the law is sufficiently clear. I accept that that begs the question, is the law sufficiently clear? We say that it is. My learned friend says, well, no, there could be assumptions of responsibility in any circumstances. You can't be specific. I've been asked questions about whether this would be an assumption of responsibility. I suppose one could turn that over one's head. And the challenge might be to my lady friend, what wouldn't be an assumption of responsibility? Because her submissions in various cases have suggested there will almost always be an assumption of responsibility. Well, that respect can't be right. And otherwise, there would be plainly a duty of care, which is precisely not what the Supreme Court decided. At Tyndall, I can also take briefly, which is at tab 22, page 767. This was another police case about whether or not the police should have made safe an area where there'd be an accident and the question whether they owed a duty or not. And it's a useful analysis by a court consisting of judges with particular familiarity with this area of the law, if I may respectfully say so.
You may.
And Lord Justice.
Well, I think one must look at this current constitution as a whole, of course. The is equally, well.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. But no, you're right. Certainly Lord Justice Stuart Smith has been heavily involved in this area of law for a long time.
But both as an advocate and as a judge.
Indeed.
And he gave the leading judgment in this case, which the other two judges agreed. And he went over much of the territory that we've trampled over together today. And for example, at 780, he refers to Lord Hoffman in Goring. And then perhaps of some assistance, he refers at paragraph 42 to Robinson. This is page 782. I've just taken two Robinson. But then of some significance, this is a decision in which he reviews the effect of N versus Poole. And this is a recent decision. "Two children were placed with their mother by the council under its powers and brought over by a third party where they were subjected to significant harassment. They brought proceedings. They asserted the common law duty was said to derive from section 17 of the Children Act 1989." So that's how he understood the decision.
What struck me about reading paragraph 43, as I did earlier with the gentleman, is that it's quite a sort of narrow summary of Poole and emphasizes, to my mind, that Poole is quite a long way on the facts and the sort of cases we're dealing with here, and Mrs Justice Lambert was dealing with in DFX. This is a section 17 case.
With respect, what he's doing here is going through in brief summary the recent decisions. He goes, for example, to 41 of Michael and then to Robinson and then Poole. Now, I mean, one wouldn't expect with great respect for him to go into immense detail, because this is a police case rather than a social work case. But I think what he's saying is that these are the recent decisions in this area. And then what he does is at page 788, he comes to some conclusions.
He sets out his conclusions.
Yes. What he says, well, I'm fixing up the beginning of 787, the paragraph 54. In my judgment, this statement of principle. And he is quoting there from Poole, in full actually. So with respect, it does go.
Where are you reading from now?
If you look at 53, paragraph 53, you see that the lordship said.
No, you're right. You're right.
He gives it in fact a great due more than.
He does, you're right.
By citing in full.
No, but my point was that paragraph 43, I was struck by looking at it from that way, how quite a long way the facts of Poole were from where we are in these cases. You're right, he does. Said extensively citations from Lord Reed's judgment.
And what he actually says, having referred to these three paragraphs, which we looked at quite a lot during the course of this case. He then says, 54, "In my judgment, this statement of principle", so it was a statement of principle that applies to the police as to other authorities. "When considering whether police are to be taken as having assumed responsibility to an individual member of the public, so as to give rise to a duty to exercise reasonable care, I must apply the principles derived from the decisions of higher authority, to which I've referred, in these, of course, Poole or Michael."
Then he sets out A to whatever it is.
Yes. Sort of one to six particularly.
But those are the principles relating to the police cases, aren't they?
Well, he goes a bit further than that. Obviously, it's only necessary to consider the police. But what he says, for example, is, "Whereas statutory authority, including the police, is entrusted with a mere power, it cannot generally be made liable for any damage sustained by a member of the public by reason of a failure to exercise that power. In general, the duty of a public authority is to avoid using damage not to prevent, to cause damage, not to prevent further damage due to causes which they're responsible."
Is there a distinction between a power and a duty?
Well, a failure to exercise a power is the classic stove in. The power, mostly the social services, they have certain things that are described as duties in terms of the statute. And then there are powers usually which can be exercised by local authorities pursuant to a general duty that might exist. The distinctions between powers and duties, I'm in danger of going down another rabbit warren. That's also been much considered over the years. But there's of course a duty which comes from the statute and the question whether a duty of care is owed in tort, which is a rather different question.
I mean, is your case that Lord Justice Stuart Smith in paragraphs 56, 54, 1 to 9 was summarizing all the essential principles which this court needs to apply?
Yes, he was applying them specifically to the police. But they are applicable mutatis, mutandis, we suggest, to public authorities in general and the social services. And if I needed any authority for that, the fact that he cites in extenso the judgment of the Supreme Court in Poole and Lord Reed's judgment provides some additional support to that submission.
But again, it's not so much the principles as their application that matters. And if you read paragraph 17, 71, the reasons why on the facts of that case there was no social responsibility or circumstances justifying the imposition of a duty of care are really very different indeed. Because the way the court understood it was that the claim was that where the police had the power to exercise a physical control over a third party or an accident scene, then that is sufficient to amount to an assumption of control over responsibility.
It's all, a lordship referring to paragraph 71.
71, yes.
Yes, he says, "I cannot accept the claimant's submission that a duty can arise in circumstances, quote, where a defendant has the power to exercise physical control, what leads to influence."
So the fact that they'd gone to the scene and the fact they persuaded the person who'd had the first accident to go in the house, well, they didn't actually, the judge found, persuaded him to go into an ambulance so he wasn't stopping traffic, didn't mean that the police assumed responsibility in his place to control the traffic. The ice was there and they turned up and they dealt with the first accident. And you can't say thereafter they're responsible to stop further accidents. It's the classic problem we've had throughout the whole of today and yesterday. The principles are clear, it's the application on the fact that they're.
Of course, that's absolutely correct. But what we say are the principles are very clear.
Are so clear that there's no room for doubt on particulars pleaded in these two cases.
Yes, that's the position, and that was the decision of Mrs Justice Stacey. And we say she was absolutely right.
Again, you refer to paragraph 75.
I was in fact, and you can see that it's been highlighted. I can see no reason why the point of law in this appeal can only be decided after a trial. Facts pleaded are clear. No reason to think that examination of facts would now assume to be true could lead to a different outcome. The law is not in a state of flux. On the contrary, the law is settled by successive decisions that are binding upon this court. And that very much echoes what we've been submitting throughout. And of course, there is a reasonable point to make that it is very expensive to take these cases to trial. I think the case before Mrs Justice Lambert, the cost budget for the claimants was a million pounds or thereabouts. Now, the lordship's not going to go into the appropriate costs of that case. But it is a relevant factor that if the law is clear, we say it is clear, taking all these cases to court is a very, very considerable drain on the public purse and the time of social workers and the like. So it may not be any longer, in view of Poole, necessary to consider policy in terms of whether there's a duty of care. But it is a reasonable point to make, is the law clear enough? And we say it is clear enough. The consequences of saying, well, you have to wait until something turns up at trial are very, very expensive. The only other case I said I would mention was Blewett. I think we don't need to go to it because I think it'll be reasonably familiar from yesterday. Can I just take the court to our skeleton argument where we summarize what we say about it? To page 24 of our skeleton. It was us who brought this case to the attention of the court, although my lady friend now relies on it, but that's fair enough. But I wonder if I could simply ask the court to read what we say about this case in 57, which does, I think, deal with some of the points raised to me about section 20 as well.
Am I on the right place?
It should be page 24, paragraph 57 of our skeleton.
Yes, is that internal 74 in the Y X?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have it rather separately. Paragraph 57, it says, "Secondly, it is said that a duty of care does arise from a provision of section 20." If the lordship's ladyship would be so kind as to read that paragraph, I needn't read it, read it out.
Again, sorry to duplicate, but was the duty of care about the safety of accommodation? Or was it a duty of care not to safeguard the person from harm from others?
Well, it was to do, I mean, the answer is a bit of an illusion of both. Because the, I mean, it wasn't the physical safety in terms of, was it for.
Not the watching ceiling, it was the people they attacked.
But I mean, the state of the premises could include who was there as well as what his physical condition was. Very happy to go back to Blewett if necessary.
I think one of the points also is whether there were security guards. It would have been recognized that he needed to have security guards and there wasn't one there. Only a little question or something.
No, you're quite right. I mean, that all goes to the satisfactoriness or otherwise of the premises. But as the court appreciates our point on section 20 is, there may be a limited duty in respect of premises, as there was in Blewett and there would be under section 20. But you can't extrapolate from that and say there is a general duty because the social services were involved and therefore if you don't take the children into care, you're liable because there is a breach of duty. That is, as it were, pulling yourself up by your bootstraps.
I don't quite understand, and I may be the wrong place. I don't quite understand the last part of paragraph 57. There's certain there's a duty of care to seek a care order during the. Is that what's asserted, there's a duty to seek a care order?
Yes, I mean, this is a response to the.
I see, that's, I see.
And that's what, that is what is said against us. I mean, it's either that or it's saying, because I don't think, it's, I think that the way it's put is, this is what I described as reverse engineering. I think Mars has described that. Because there's a duty arising out of looking after the child temporarily, even if you didn't breach it and there's no allegation that you did anything wrong, you therefore got into the realms of there being an assumption of responsibility. We say that is a complete misconception.
Well, I think the argument, I thought the argument was that one, on this case, that once, on this point, once a, the local authority had decided that a child's welfare required him to be received, accommodated for a period of time, either permanently or temporarily, that that was an assumption of responsibility such as it could give rise to a duty of care. Whether it did depends on the circumstances, whether there was a breach obviously depends on.
Well, our answer to that is that if there is a duty, it's a very limited duty, such as existed in Blewett, in relation to the accommodation itself.
Yes, I know, that is essentially your case.
And the fact that the, also the many powers that the social services have, only albeit that this has to be done with the consent of the parents. So it's completely different from taking a child into care. That does not, as you were, alter the situation and put the social services in a different situation than they would normally be, i.e. not owing a duty of care in tort.
All the covering ground we've already covered.
I think we probably are.
So that's Blewett.
And so I come finally to Mrs Justice Stacey, who actually gave the judgment in this case. But I won't go into much detail because I know that the court is very familiar with what she had to say. But perhaps I can just highlight one or two points. At page 76, we have the legislative context. A pretty similar summary to what we saw in Poole.
All right, now, you say page 76.
It is, it is in the bundle.
It's in both bundles, isn't it?
It's in both bundles.
Page 76. It's an X.
H X A. Sorry, I think it is in both.
Yeah. Yes.
So she sets out the legislative context. And I underline just one point, which is in paragraph 15, which I know is very familiar with certainly some members of the court. The fact that the obligation to safeguard and promote the welfare of the children within their area and so far as this consistent with our duty to promote the upbringing of such children by their families. It seems to me that often summarizes the difficulty social workers have to encounter in general terms, but there it is in statute.
Sorry, yeah, where were you reading?
I'm looking for paragraph 15.
Yes, and that is section 17.
Yes. But it just shows that how difficult these powers are to exercise when you have to take into account not only the need and the desirability and the importance of safeguarding children, but also so far as it's consistent with that to promote the upbringing of such children by their families. And I'm aware, and the lordship is probably much better aware than I, that there have been different views about how quickly you intervene and over the years there have been different views about these things.
They haven't flowed, depending on all sorts of things, not least obviously in other cases.
Yes.
Of course, I know I have a crack record. But section 22 is in slightly different terms in that that provision doesn't appear in the same way in section 22.
Section 22.3, I think.
Yeah, so you have the obligation to safeguard and promote the welfare of the child. And you, there's no reference to upbringing by the family. But at that point, and there is elsewhere, no.
There'll always be this abiding duty towards the welfare of the child which exists, albeit it doesn't give rise to a duty.
I mean, the difference between 17 and 22, I know this is over. Just to emphasize this point, 17 is a general duty to everyone, all the children in the area. Whereas 22 is a specific duty to a specific child. And the fact that the same, the fact that the words safeguard and promote the welfare appear in both doesn't mean that the approach to duty is the same of it.
I wouldn't entirely accept that. I mean, I defer to your knowledge of the way these things work. But of course, the duty is expressed in general terms towards children. But what matters in every case is the duty towards a particular child. And then accommodation will only be of a particular child as opposed to children in the area, which is the general overarching duty. So that is perhaps the significance of the difference in the drafting.
One interpretation is that once a decision is taken to accommodate a child, then there's an assumption of responsibility. You say that's far too.
I say that.
High. Mrs Lambert doesn't say it's high enough. She says the duty arises in earlier stage.
Yes, I mean, of course, there are lots of different instances in which somebody might be temporarily accommodated, which I think is important when we're looking at whether or not that generates an assumption of responsibility. It might be for long periods, it might be for short periods, it might be because the parents say, please help out. There are a variety of different circumstances. And it would, in my submission, be wholly contrary to the ratio of Poole to say that simply because you temporarily accommodate someone as opposed to taking them to care, you thereby assume a responsibility which you would not otherwise assume.
And many children are accommodated indefinitely under section 20 without a care order being obtained. Children, some children are placed in secure accommodation without there being a care order.
Yes, and I'm sure.
So the duty of section 20 can be from a one-off overnight, best by care in an emergency, to indefinite placement.
And sure, and I would accept that if somebody is accommodated on a long-term basis, the law has been consistent in suggesting, once you control somebody's environment, whether it's somebody imprisoned or subject to accommodation, there will always be a duty to take care for their safety whilst in that accommodation. And that's the law, essentially, whether, and it's reflected in the approach of the cases. But what that doesn't follow, that when they, local authorities exercising its powers, which include by agreement accommodating somebody for shorter or longer, that there is a duty. But of course, it isn't suggested in this case, and this is an important point, it isn't suggested that anything went wrong while she was, while there was the temporary accommodation arrangement. So it isn't causatively significant at all. I mean, it would be a different thing if it said while temporarily accommodating A, B and C happened. So in a sense, it's just part of the history. And their argument, my lady friend's argument, is not that this caused anything or failed to help in any way. It's simply, ah, now you've done that, you've crossed a rubicon. And we submit that simply cannot be right.
We haven't looked at section 33. I don't want to drag this out, Lord Fox. But that relates to the duty, that relates to the concept of effects of a care order, which includes further statutory duties in respect of a child of the local authority's circumstances.
Once again, I don't want to sound like a crack record, but all these duties that exist, exist because Parliament has said there is a duty. But it does not answer the question as to whether there is a duty of care in tort, which is, as has consistently been the jurisprudence for the last 25 years, a wholly different question.
Yeah, I know, I accept that, of course. Yes, right, now let's go. Let's remove the needle over the cracks in the record. Come on to perhaps the final.
We are into the final.
Final track on your.
Page 78 of Mrs Justice Stacey. One of the reasons I didn't take the court to Mrs Justice Lambert's judgment in much detail was because her review of the law is actually cited helpfully in Mrs Justice Stacey's judgment, where she sets out what the law is. And that's, we submit a correct analysis of the law. And then, having finished the quotation at the end of paragraph 24 of Mrs Justice Stacey, we come to 25, "Only the assumption of responsibility rooted to the establishment of duty is applicable in this case." The concept is wide. And then it's worth reading paragraph 26. "Lord Reed identified two possible routes, of which he deferred, assuming responsibility." I think that's probably an answer to a question I should have put before when asked, well, will there be circumstances of an assumption of responsibility? Lord Reed didn't say very much about that. What he did, in a sense, he said, yes, there's been an effect of assumption of responsibility in Barrett and in D and East Berkshire. Then at page 82, Mrs Justice Stacey refers once again to what Mrs Justice Lambert had said when she asked herself the circumstances and when a duty of care might arise out of a failure to exercise a statutory function.
So where are you now?
Paragraph 31 of Mrs Justice Stacey.
All right, so you, yeah, so you've, you're attached to paragraph 26 of what she said.
Yes.
Yeah, and now you've jumped on to 82.
I have.
To 82. Yes?
She had found, perhaps I should go back briefly. I know that the court will read this judgment very carefully, so I may have a point. But she had found, Mrs Justice Lambert, in this case, as emissions or failure to prefer a benefit, is plainly within the Poole ratio. Then she says, "Analysed the circumstances when a duty of care might arise out of a failure to exercise a function and concludes, I conclude, that whilst the fact that a public authority is operating within a statutory saying does not of itself generate a common law duty, it does not follow that a failure, including taking a step, which in any law, it can never be comiousable." including taking a step, which in any law can never be conversable at common law. Whether a duty of care is generated on the facts of this case, an assumption of responsibility depends on whether there is putting it qualitatively something more, we got that from the Hounslow case, either something intrinsic to the nature of the statutory function which gives rise to an obligation on the defendant to act carefully in its exercising that function, or something about the manner in which it's conducted itself towards the claimants which gives rise to the duty of care.
Now, would you care to give some example, give an example of both of those? So something in the specific context of the statutory regime we are concerned with. Can you give something where there is some example where there is something intrinsic to the nature of the statutory function itself which gives rise to the duty of care? I'm sorry, would you wish to give me that?
Yes. I think Poole makes it clear that it doesn't arise at all in the context of the statutory scheme. I think we get that from paragraph eighteen. Eighteen eighty-one.
Doesn't arise at all in the context of the statutory scheme, in this, in this, in this statutory scheme.
Yeah.
Context of this statutory scheme, eighty to eighty-one.
This is where Lord Brown-Murkison explained in relation to the education cases, a public body which offers a service to the public often assumes responsibility of those assumed using the service. The assumption of responsibility and undertaking the reasonable care will be taken either express or more commonly implied, usually from the reasonable foreseeability, reliance or the exercise of such a care. Thus, whether operated privately or under statutory powers, a hospital undertakes to exercise reasonable care of the medical treatment of its patients. The same is true of an education authority accepting pupils into its schools. In the present case, on the other hand, the councils investigating and monitoring the claimant's position did not involve the provision of a service to them on which their mother would be expected to rely. It may have been reasonably foreseeable that their mother would be anxious. The council should act so as to protect the family from their neighbours, in particular by rehousing them. But that anxiety does not amount to reliance, nor could it be said the claimants' mother had entrusted the safety to the council or that the council had accepted that responsibility, nor had the council taken the claimants into care and thereby assumed responsibility for their welfare. The position is not therefore the same as in Barrett and Unfield. In short, the nature of the statutory functions relied on in the particulars of claim did not itself entail that the council assumed or undertook a responsibility towards the claimants to perform those functions with reasonable care.
Mr. Stagg gets a plus point for remembering that particular quote, but of course, the statutory functions are not necessarily the same in this case. There's an overlap. Some of the statutory functions that are relied on in this case were those in Poole, but others weren't.
Yes.
As we, crack record, as we discussed, but that's, as far as section seventeen applies, you would say that rules that out. Yes?
But it's not just section, sorry, not just section seventeen, so I was just looking back at paragraph eighteen. This is part of the problem, without permission to be unkind to the claimants who drafted the pleadings. It's such a mess, one doesn't know, but this seems to be saying, if you read eighteen and eighty-one, that section seventeen and section forty-seven are themselves are not of the nature to give rise to a duty of care. You would be looking on the facts of this case at assumption of responsibility, although the claimants do actually refer to other grounds in their pleadings. But I'm sure they'll tell us if they've abandoned the causing the risk or whatever. But that's where we're actually in this case, is we have to look for something factually, something more factually, that would amount to an assumption of responsibility, save possibly, suppose in the X Y A case, if there are other statutory functions.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, that's your answer to the function. What about the manner? I'm asking, in other words, I'm asking you to give an example of something about the manner in which the defendant has conducted itself towards a clearance. Can you give an example where?
I'm not sure that I can. I've obviously scratched my head about this. Well, never wants to say never. I really come back to that position. But it's not obvious to me that there is, or never wants to rule out these possibilities, but I can't think of an obvious example, I'm afraid.
Thank you.
I don't suppose that, I mean, apart from giving those specific examples that Lord Reed gave about the Barrett-type situation.
Yeah, you really say it's Barrett or circumstances.
Equivalent to that.
Equivalent to Barrett.
And we say that really picking over the details is not, is not consistent with Poole.
The generality of care cases will not raise it. It has to be something truly unusual and indeed so unusual that neither you nor your team could even anticipate what it would be.
As I say, I put it the other way. The argument, the claimant's, appears to be that anything is an assumption of responsibility.
Yes.
So that, you know, there is a difference. We say that the House of the Supreme Court has made a position as clear as it could be. And simply to say there is a distinction of assumption of responsibility undermines the force of that case and undermines the power of precedent and the points made in Robinson.
You don't, sorry, I'm talking to you. And you don't, of course, now rely on policy. But there are, there are, one can think of a lot of good policies. Obviously, one's familiar, I am certainly, with the very difficult judgments that social workers have to make in this area. And highlighted, of course, by the, what's said in section seventeen, to which you referred earlier. On the one hand, the safeguard of welfare, on the other hand, to ensure upbringing, so far as consistent with that, within the family.
Clearly, these are good points, and they come into the analysis. I think the learning friend would argue they come in on the breach.
A breach, yes.
I can hear him saying that, but what we would say is that it's also relevant to the overall way the law has developed in this area, which is because there is a statutory scheme of this sort containing all these sort of powers and discretions, that is why you don't ordinarily find there's a duty of care. So it comes in, as it were, on that analysis of whether or not it should give rise to a duty of care at all, particularly when there is no actionable claim based on the statute itself. And the law has consistently said, is it appropriate to superimpose a common law duty when it is clear that there is no actionable duty? So for example, in the old days, the Factories Act, you could rely on a breach of the Factories Act to give rise to a duty of claim. And sometimes, an act of parliament will specifically provide that you do, otherwise the courts will look as a matter of construction the act and say whether it does, on its proper construction, give rise to a claim. But here we have authority, clear authority, that it does not. And that's another reason why, and that's, the policy reasons, which my lord puts to me, are no doubt part of the reason why that is the case. Because these are very difficult decisions.
Yes.
Then I was looking at paragraph thirty-one of Mrs. Justice Stacey, where she's concluding that whether or not there should be a duty of care arising out of a failure to exercise a statutory function. And she states the question and concludes, as Lord Reed made clear, and submits this question as one which is fact-sensitive. Of course, it's fact-sensitive, but what Mrs. Justice Lambert did was to dismiss the various arguments that were, like taking on the task. Allegation was rejected in Poole. Getting involved is the way one, or taking on the task was the way it was put by my learning friend during the course of yesterday. Applying the law to the facts of the three specific allegations of breach of duty before her, as is missed. The judge concluded that even though the commissioning of the Rayside report amounted to taking of the step, the report was not obtained for the benefit nor for the parent's benefit, rather it was for the benefit of the social services. So we then come finally to page ninety-one, where she, Mrs. Justice Stacey forms her analysis and discussion. And I know that's something that the court will have well in mind. She concluded at paragraph sixty-six, sixty-five, which is beyond doubt the local authority investigating and monitoring a child's position and by taking on a task or exercising its general duty on section seventeen or placing a child on the child protection register or investigate under section forty-seven does not involve the provision of a service to the child on which they can be expected to rely. Poole, DFX, something more is required. The defendants are merely operating a statutory scheme which is not created to duty of care. That's what we've been submitting throughout. And for the reasons that Mrs. Justice Lambert and Lord Reed set out, placing on the register doesn't amount to something more. The claim that the undertaking of a full assessment gives rise to an assumption of responsibility is unarguable. She agrees with the deputy master, why the fact of consideration being given to apply for a care order. Why should it be an assumption of responsibility? Mr. Levinson has no answer. The duty of care is recognized to arise when a care order is made because at that point, the local authority has parental responsibility under the act. That's the barrel point. Which is something else sufficient to amount to an assumption of responsibility. So seeking legal advice or undertaking a full assessment is not sufficient to amount to that extra something. And then there was also the argument about keeping safe, which Mr. Levinson had advanced, which is dealt with at paragraph sixty-eight. She did not accept that. And then we come to paragraph seventy, where the section twenty point, which my lord has been asking me about. She said, there was no criticism of the standard of care received by YXA during the intermittent periods of the temporary accommodation which could give rise to potential claim. Instead, the claim was advanced, as it was in HXA, on the basis of alleged duty of care, which if charged would involve the taking of care proceedings. It is now well established there's no duty of care in relation to the child protection functions generally, and the fact of section twenty cannot be used as a peg on which to assert the assumption of responsibility. And then she says this, the imprecise statutory duty in section twenty-two-three, what my lord is making, cannot support a duty of care where none would otherwise exist. There is no logical reason why the provision of section twenty would make a difference. It does not amount to something else needed to indicate an assumption of responsibility to take care proceedings merely an assumption of responsibility of a duty of care in relation to the accommodation itself. That's the point I've been making, nor is the burning building the line of cases, not just systems. And so going over the page to seventy-two, the Supreme Court has now clarified the approach taken to ascertain whether a duty of care is owed, the facts in these two appeals are on point, and so closely analogous, that was her view, to the recent Supreme Court judgments, and now DFX at first sight, cannot be described as a developing area of law. So those were the conclusions that she reached, that the deputy master of paragraph seventy-five were correct, to conclude as they did. The allegations were, and this is coming back to where I started, of an omission, a failure to confer a benefit, not making things better. And in neither case, as the claimer asserted fact that could establish, the defendant, the local authority, had assumed responsibility. Since no duty of care has arisen, claims for common law makers were unwinnable. There was no arguable assumption that could be found to be inferred either from the net tree of the statutory function or the manner of the behaviour by the defendant. Even pre-X, both judges were also correct, DFX, in their analysis, that neither case raised issues in developing area of law. Post-DFX, the position becomes clearer still. The application of principles established by Poole, Robinson, Michael, provided the parent's consent does not amount to something else so as to amount to responsibility. As did the criticism of the master heard, the exercise of discretion, that's a different point, I need to trouble you because I don't think it's going to be pursued. So my lords, at rather greater length than I intended, those are the submissions, unless I can assist the court any further on behalf of the.
So is Mr. Stagg going to follow on, briefly on Chapman?
My lord, yes. My lords and my ladies have a copy of the decision now.
Yeah, we know that this, we were aware of this case, as permission's been granted.
Permission's been granted, and the deal's been transferred to this court.
And it's listed. I've been, there's been discussion about listing.
There has been. We haven't got a date yet. There was an attempt by the council in that case to have the two, that case listed with these.
I know.
We said we didn't think that we could deal with all three in two days, and that's clearly not doing the time.
That wasn't our decision, that was somebody else's decision.
It was Lady Justice Andrews' decision.
That's right.
The judgment is an extempore one, given by Judge Roberts.
And it is listed, I think it's listed in July.
I'm not aware of a listing date yet.
Maybe, maybe I was going to sue. I've certainly had discussions with the listing office about when it could be accommodated. When the judgment in this case is going to be available, that was the.
Yes. Well, I have not been made aware of a date or a timeframe yet.
Forget I spoke, anyway, this is an extempore judgment.
It is. And I think the judge did have the opportunity, however, to tidy it up when it was, when the transcript was prepared. But you will see that it consists really of a fairly lengthy recitation of the content of the particulars of the claim, and then a summary of the submissions made by myself and the defendant, Mr. Chapman, for the claimant.
What are the facts? I mean, in pleadings, you should have fact, and then those facts are said to amount to assumption of responsibility. Where were the facts that Miss Campbell is relying, no, it's not Miss Campbell this time, it's simply called Mr. William Chapman. Where are the facts that she's relying on there?
Paragraph eleven, my lord, third page onwards, you'll see a lengthy quotation from the amended particulars of claim. And it is a case of abuse and neglect within the family home. And the argument of Mr. Chapman, in his amended particulars of claims, to the effect that the defendant undertook a number of positive acts applying the professional skill of the social workers and ancillary workers who attended the family home. And you will see the various steps that were relied on. Positive acts, it said. That's the distinction Mr. Chapman sought to draw in his submissions, too. He's saying they're positive acts and those give rise to an assumption of responsibility without more. That was his argument.
Between, you say distinguished, what was he distinguishing?
His line was that positive acts undertaken by a local authority in the course of their social work activities of themselves amount to an assumption of responsibility. I hope I'm being fair to him, because he's not here to defend himself. I think that's effectively what his argument is and was.
Yes. He was, I just, this was quite a long time ago, it's going to be two years before this appears heard on this period point. So this was eighteen months before Mrs. Justice Stacey, was it before or after the?
This was before in time, both the two cases that were before you. There was some delay in the High Court, and then the application was made to transfer, which is concerning.
I won't turn this at my fingertips, forgive me. Where was it in relation to Mrs. Justice Lambert?
Before Mrs. Justice Lambert's decision, which was in mid-two thousand and twenty-one.
Twenty-fourth of May, twenty-two.
So this case, the decision predates, as Mrs. Justice Stacey pointed out, he did not have the benefit of Mrs. Justice Lambert's judgment.
Yeah, that's right.
So he reviews the submissions made for both parties at page five onwards.
Yeah.
That's my defence, and my submissions, pages six onwards. And then his conclusions, you can see in the last but one paragraph on page twelve of your printout. It's paragraph thirty-one.
Yeah.
And he effectively accepts the submission of Mr. Chapman, that various positive acts are alleged, which the defendant undertook for the assistance of the claimant. This is sub-paragraph five, the claimant was reliant on the defendant's social service department, and the positive acts taken by the defendant are sufficient to give rise to an arguing assumption of responsibility. And that really is the sum total of his reasoning. Obviously, it was an extempore judgment. On appeal, in relation to that aspect of the case, the defendant's submission would be that that confuses two quite separate concepts. On the one hand, the distinction between acts and omissions, or causing harm and making things better, which we now know that we must apply in the Poole case. And on the other hand, the ordinary omissions case, if I can call it that, where no duty arises, and an assumption of responsibility, as defined by Lord Reed, where a duty may arise. So that is in outline going to be what the defendant says on appeal. As it's turned out, extensive amended particulars of claim have been filed on behalf of the claimant in that case, raising a very wide range of arguments in favour of duty of care, which will have to be considered by the court. And my lords, my ladies, that's all I have to say about that, to say it's under appeal. May I just pick up on a point made by my lord of justice Lewis towards the end by the. my lady's submissions, about the scope of the particulars in this case? Because it will be appreciated, in both cases, Mr Levinson pleaded the cases very widely, and in the event, in response to the strike of the application, chose to focus on particular parts of the history as amounting to an assumption of responsibility. I believe I'm right in saying that before the deputy master and the master, there was no specific consideration of the other ways in which, in the pleading, a duty of care was said to arise, though in the event, both masters did deal with those submissions briefly in their judgements. Certainly before Mrs Justice Stacy, there was no attempt to argue any other basis for duty of care other than assumption of responsibility. Obviously, if there was now to be an attempt to resurrect some of the other parts of the pleading, we would need to be in a position to make submissions on that if the court's prepared to entertain that, which would obviously cause us some concern.
Well, that strikes me as part of the problem, because there's a heading adding to the danger, there's a heading failing to control the wrongdoers, there's a heading preventing others from protecting the claimant, so there's eight paragraphs of different allegations.
Yes.
Through different legal allegations. On top of that, because it's not put as fact, I'm sorry to define Mr Levinson, but this sequence of events doesn't help. It seems three facts are relied on now as to give rise to the assumption of responsibility. So you do need to deal with all the other dozens of facts.
Well, you will see from the master's judgements, and we provide the citations in our skeleton argument, I think it's paragraph thirty-five of Deputy Master Baggett's judgment, where he deals with all these quite succinctly, we would say correctly. And similarly, in his judgment, Master Dagno, I think at eighty to eighty-three or something like that, deals with, again with those, even though they're not the subjects of specific submissions.
If the appeal is allowed, it's all back in. Miss Cumberley can start again on everything, can't she?
Well, well, she wouldn't be able to, because of course, there is the opportunity to, to argue those points.
The case is there, it's been struck out by Master Baggett. If, on this hypothesis, we allow the appeal, the case wouldn't be struck out. And again, I don't want to sound too critical, but it's been hopping about, channel hopping, I think some judges call it, fact today, fact tomorrow, or island hopping. Fact today, legal responsibility paragraph the next, but all of it would be back in. There's no discipline at all in these pleadings.
Well, we would respectfully say that even if your lordships, my lords and my lady, were to allow this appeal, that nevertheless, those parts of the pleading would have been...
But how? I know you say it, but what is the legal mechanism? There is a claim, it has been struck out, if the order is set aside, it's not struck out, so...
Well, you can strike out parts of the pleading, and that's frequently done, where parts are, do not give rise to an argument, claiming other parts do.
We haven't had that argument before, have we?
You haven't, no, and that, that would obviously only arise, and we know what your lordships and my lady are going to say.
So if we allow, if, if we were to allow the appeal, there might be a further application to strike out pleadings.
Well, well, those parts are already struck out, and we...
They are struck out.
They are struck out. The masters, well, the, the masters struck out, Deputy Master Baggett struck out everything except one allegation related to how the school...
Yes.
And the reason why we didn't make that application in relation to that is because, of course, teachers, it's well established, it's the nineteenth century of duty of care, and so that would need looking at to see if the duty of care extended that far. And in relation to YXA, there was the parallel Human Rights Act claim, in respect of which no application was made to strike out, and so that remains. But certainly so far as the other aspects of duty of care are concerned, we would say that those would remain struck out, because the masters, both said, those are not arguable, and nobody has sought to bring that into question either before Mrs Justice Stacy or in this court.
All right, so the appeal to Mrs Justice Stacy, and hence to us, was only on, um, assumption of responsibility?
It was, and I think you, I think we have the grounds of appeal, I don't, I think we have the grounds of appeal, too, are in the, in the bundles, but...
I'm just looking at the order, Master Baggett, page one-six-seven, and he seems to have struck out paragraphs one to thirty inclusive.
Yes, and that's everything apart from the, the allegation relating to the school.
Yeah, so the masters and, masters and masters struck out everything else, apart from the school or the human rights claim respectively.
Yes, there's no human rights claim, there wasn't YXA.
And the appeal was for the reinstatement of the assumption of responsibility parts.
Yes.
Shall we just nail this down by, in each case, looking at the particulars of claim? So, speaking hypothetically, if we allow the appeal, we know what's back in. Let's look at H first, shall we?
If we look at HXA, you've got Deputy Master Baggett's order, starting at page one-sixty-six of the court.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see that, as your lordship has said, paragraphs one to thirty inclusive of the first claimants' particulars of claim are struck out.
And I'm looking at the application of the appellant's notice, which is the appeal that was dismissed, and that starts at one-one-eight. And it's the whole of it, at page one-one-nine, please set out the order you wish to appeal against, paragraphs one and two of Deputy Master Baggett's order, which provide paragraphs one to thirty inclusive are struck out, and that appeal has been dismissed.
Yes, the grounds of appeal were perfectly general, you see the grounds of appeal at page one-twenty-seven. So as the friend put, those very generally as he was entitled to do, but in the event, he only pursued the particular aspects of the history which you've heard argument about, i.e., the taking, the decision to take care proceedings, which was not action, or decision to seek advice about care proceedings.
Well, let's, let's look at the, let's look at Mrs Justice Stacy's judgment, an order.
The, the order is at page seventy in the same papers, and that simply dismisses the appeal and then gives consequential directions.
I mean, what does ground two mean at page one-twenty-seven? That means all of it is in, because it's a developing area, does it?
I beg your lordship's pardon?
Page one-two-seven, I can see that ground one says wrong to strike out part, because of the assumption of responsibility, but ground two was wrong to strike out part, because it's a developing area, it may turn then on, which ground, because that seems to say that all of the parts...
Well, I wonder whether, I wonder whether ground two should not be construed in the light of what's said in ground one.
Yeah. We have to back to pleadings one-on-one, I think, so...
Yeah, but I think, I, I, my provisional view, my provisional view is that that's the way the ground appeal should be read.
Okay, so...
The point, the point is that since, since at least, since the masters led, there has been no attempt to uphold the claimant's cases, other than on the grounds of assumptions of responsibility that we have been discussing.
Well, let's look at the particulars of claim.
So paragraphs twenty-two to twenty-five would go then, on your analysis?
Or not, not, would not come back?
No, would not come back.
The whole of one to thirty goes, as per the orders below.
You know, but if, if the appeal were allowed, it's only an appeal about one to nineteen and twenty-six onwards, so on your analysis, paragraphs twenty to twenty-five have gone inclusive.
Well, it rather depends on the question, which with respect, probably wasn't answered very clearly yesterday, which is how long, if you've assumed responsibility, what's the effect of that? Does that then, that you owe a duty to the child forever into the future, as long as you've got involvement with the child? Or is it, does it only arise for a limited period or for a limited purpose? We don't actually, so it depends on what your lordships were to find about that. Certainly, we would say that if, for example, your lordships found section twenty accommodation gave rise to an assumption of responsibility at least argued, then we would say in YXA, for example, that everything that predated that goes still.
We don't strike out things in the abstract, issues, arguments, sequence of events, we strike out paragraphs and particulars of claim, and in the light of what you are saying, on the HXA case, if you were to lose this appeal, if, then you say the consequence of losing the appeal is to reinstate paragraphs one to nineteen and twenty-six to twenty-nine inclusive, but not to reinstate twenty to twenty-five, would you say?
My lord, that, that would be right, although we would also probably look at the particulars and say that those particulars, they haven't even sought to uphold, would, would also stay, stayed off, and they would be restricted to the case that they have suggested to this court is on.
How would then? We'd have to give a judgment, an order, that they can rely on VV and WW, which they relied on, but on none of the others, it's a nightmare.
Well, it, it, it's a product of the way that the case has been argued, I would say, before the masters, before Mrs Justice Stacy, now before this court.
So you want to express submissions, do you, on what part of the order which is, or part of the claim which will be reinstated if the appeal was allowed?
Yeah.
You want us to say, you say it would be paragraphs one to eight, and then which parts of nine?
Well, it's the ones that Miss Cumberley relied on, which is L...
Well, that, that's paragraph fourteen, actually, so it's L and VV, but...
The fourteenth, we haven't got to fourteen yet.
Yeah, it's not, it's actually, it's one, it's one, one to thirteen, fourteen...
L and VV, the, the two that are identified as giving rise to an assumption of responsibility.
Because L is the initiation of care proceedings, and VV was the specific allegation of touching the press and starting the keeping safe work.
Well, I had J not, too.
I think J was referred to before...
The defendant took no action.
The master. Or at least, that's, that's the first, I think, one of the early encounters.
Okay, so, my lords, I need to make a note, one to, one to thirteen, you say fourteen...
L and VV.
L and VV.
My lord, may I make this suggestion, that it, it might be preferable to see what your lordship, my lords and my lady, have to say about the case, before we worry about which parts go?
The wrong way around, and that's part of the problem with this whole case. You aren't arguing properly about particulars and facts. It's all too much in the air, we'll have this duty today, we'll have that fact tomorrow, and it's impossible to work like that. You want fifty to nineteen, don't you, will go back in, but not twenty to twenty-five, and then twenty-six would go back into twenty-nine.
So we, we, we retain only those paragraphs which have been contended for, assuming your lordships, my lords and my lady, decide that those give rise to duty of care. Fifteen to nineteen come back in, twenty-two, twenty-five inclusive would all go, because they haven't pursued an appeal, and duty of reason causation, so on.
Twenty-six to twenty-nine can back in.
Thirty.
Thirty's already in it.
Okay, that is out. Twenty-six to twenty-nine, the rest stays out.
Thirty doesn't need to go back in.
Okay, sorry, thirty...
Thirty doesn't need to go back in.
Yeah, thirty was struck out, so it's...
It's probably back in.
Okay.
And therefore, so far as YXA is concerned...
All right, hang on, let's get that back.
The problem with thirty is we piece everything that comes...
Well, again, we can, we can get rid of those parts which...
Okay, so where are we, where...
Relates to the...
So where's the order, sorry, where's the order? Where's the pleading, sorry?
The pleading starts at page one, three hundred and sixteen in the court bundle. And so sections...
What was struck out?
All struck out currently, yes.
Yes.
Apart from, well, apart from the, well, let's, I'd better just take the lordships' the order, actually.
Yeah.
And the order of Master Dagno is, starts at two-eighty-one. That was his interim order while we had a hearing, and then the substantive order's two-eighty-four, which sets out those paragraphs which effectively get rid of the negligence claim altogether, but retain the human rights claim.
Okay. And YXA, right, the order over to Paul, if appeal succeeds...
If the appeal succeeds, then we will have to effectively allow the negligence claim back in, but there would have to be a direction that, certainly for the period prior to the commencement of the section twenty accommodation, that those are not to be relied on as particulars of negligence, because that was all that this court had held to be arguable. So the...
So one to, one to, one to one, one point one to one point five. How long has law been pleaded in this way?
It's astonishing.
I mean, I know I'm going to sound like a, I mean, I've got a crap record, now I sound like a, like an old judge, but, which I am, but it is. Is it customary to plead law now, Mr Stagg? I would address you as a, if you please, regarding...
CPR say you can, it's, it's, it's open to you to do it, it's not, not excluded in the way it used to be. Whether it's desirable or not is, is, I guess, a matter of style.
But you often find passages from judgements, you plead it in this way. I haven't come across it on this date.
But styles do differ.
Okay, so one to one point, one point five comes back. Then the next bit struck out was four, is that right?
Yes, because we would be restoring part of the negligence claim, and I think that all we would be getting rid of would be the period up to the commencement of section twenty accommodation, which is page three-twenty-eight, paragraph five point two, and sub-paragraphs A to F. It's only on the twenty-eighth of April that section twenty accommodation starts.
Hey, I think, I think, Mr Stagg, I think what we'd like to do is for you, please, with Mr Levinson, to agree the consequential orders if the appeal is allowed, by which I mean, which paragraphs come in, which paragraphs go out, it's just going to take all, too much time to go through it now, you may want to think about it.
I think we'd rather think about it rather than trying to deal with it on proof now.
Yeah, well, I mean, okay, it sounds like me being, being crabby at words, Mr Stagg.
But it would be enough to say, these issues in inverted commas are in, it's really got to be tied, for the first time in this case, anchor things to the particulars, and say, that paragraph is in, that paragraph is out. Otherwise, it's hopeless.
Yeah.
There'd be argument about what's been allowed in this appeal then.
And then, and then to the extent you don't agree, with a bit of luck, the areas of appeal will be fairly narrow, and then we can decide any disputed areas.
Well, I will liaise with Mr Levinson and my friend Miss Cumberley, and we will hopefully be able to provide you with agreed orders in the event that the appeal is allowed.
Yeah.
And if you don't, we better have some, well, I don't want to invite further submissions, we'll have to have further submissions in writing, on two sides of paper, max.
But, but I do emphasise it, I, I do see difficulties with this, dealing with it in the abstract, until, until we know what your lordships think is arguable and what, what isn't.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so in other words...
Which is why...
After, after judgment?
Yeah.
After judgment, that makes sense.
But that is in my submission, the easier course.
Read?
Yeah.
Thank you. So after judgment, if appeal succeeds, consequential orders will be addressed, including the effect on the pleadings. Thank you, anything else you want, Mr Stagg?
No, that's fine, yes.
Thank you, Mr Stagg, Miss Cumberley.
And my lady, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not now clear whether we should be providing that now.
No, no, my lady's quite right, I think, we should, after judgment, but Mr Stagg to point you in.
But you can start thinking about it now, because it's quite good to go back and read the pleading and ask yourself, is paragraph twenty-three, prevention of dangers, is that really in or not? Because when you go down to the High Court if you win, you need to tell the High Because when you go down to the High Court if you win, you need to tell the High Court judge that you are arguing that, and if you're not arguing it, then you shouldn't be wasting time with it.
I mean, I was going to suggest, I thought we could provide a pleading with the struck out paragraphs.
The first thing you must have in a court case is an order that reflects the decision of the court. And then you do that. Whether you want to change your pleadings because things still stand struck out, that's up to you, but you've got to have, Miss Gumbel, an order that gives effect to the judgment of the court, and the judge of the court is going to say, either you can't argue any of it, or you can argue some of it. And then the poor judge that has the case needs to be able to pick it out, put it next to your particulars of claim, and see which bits of your sequences and descriptions of duties are in.
Yeah, I'm silenced, and I thank you.
All right, so we're clear, the effect on the pleadings will be the matter of consequential orders if we allow the appeal. I think, yes, now, what do you want to say to where it applies?
There's only, I think, three points I want to pick up. Can I start with the case of Tyndall, which was not a case I referred to, and just refer, my lords and my ladies, to one paragraph. This summary that Lord Justice Stuart Smith gives from paragraph fifty-four, I would draw attention to Roman numeral nine on page seven, eight, eight.
Yeah.
And this, and we'll tie that in with particularly the Y X A case, but also the H X A case, in determining whether a public authority owes a private law duty to an individual, it's material to ask whether the relationship between the authority and the individual is any different from the relationship between the authority and other members of the same class as the individual. And we would say that encapsulates what we've been trying to argue in this case, that where a relationship is, is found between a social worker and a particular child, the class of individuals being children in the area of the local authority for whom they owe the duties under the Children Act, where there is a specific relationship with a particular child, this paragraph would, at least, we would say, identify that that is a circumstance in relation to specifically public authority liability where there can be an assumption of responsibility. And I would just refer back to my Lord Justice Baker's remarks in relation to section twenty and section twenty-two, that those are specific duties to specific children, and therefore where a child is accommodated, that is a child with whom there is a different relationship from that of the class of individuals generally, and that's why, in that circumstance, an assumption of responsibility may arise.
How long does it continue? Assuming a child is accommodated just for one night, does the assumption of responsibility extend beyond that?
Well, it certainly, it's, again, fact sensitive, but we would say in terms of the accommodation, it would depend on why the child has been accommodated. If it's been accommodated to avoid a particular danger, if, for example, a child's accommodated because a Schedule One offender has moved into the mother's home, and they moved the child back with the same danger from which they removed the child still there, the assumption of responsibility would continue. If the child was removed for one night because a particularly violent man was there, but he was then arrested by police and kept in custody, and that danger for which they'd accommodated the child had ended, and the child could go back safely into a home, and there's no continuing danger from the same source, then that assumption of responsibility would have ended. I'm not contending that once you've assumed responsibility, that child is always a child for whom there is an assumption of responsibility. It depends on what the relationship is formed for, how it occurs, and what the object, what needs to be done. And obviously, that moves into where there's a breach in causation, because there will only be a breach if there is something continuing to cause damage. But the assumption in the section twenty is a duty to a particular child to keep them safe for the reasons that you've removed them, and on the facts of Y X A, the child has moved back into the same danger it's removed from, constantly is yo-yoing between the danger and the safety of the accommodation. And we say there, there is an assumption of responsibility, which includes not placing the child back in the same danger that it's been removed from. But it will be fact sensitive, not every case will amount to a cause of action, because in not every case will there be a continu, I mean, if five years down the line something else happens, it cannot be said there's been an assumption of responsibility because they've been accommodated five years earlier.
Fact sensitive doesn't really help when it's telling us what the duty is. I think what you're submitting is that the assumption of duty is, assumption of responsibility is responsibility to keep the child safe from the risk which caused him to be provided with accommodation in the first place. As long as that risk persists, then the duty of care persists.
My lord, yes, it may, it may be that the way of looking at it is, what is the scope of the duty in terms of when you've got a duty from an assumption of responsibility? And we say in terms of the accommodation, on the facts of this case, the scope of the duty extends to not returning the child to the same danger. And I would point out, I think the references to taking a care order from accommodation are that on the facts of this case, what eventually happened was they didn't return the child and they did apply for a care order. So that is just demonstrating that that factually can occur, because it did in fact occur in this case. So that's really the only paragraph I wanted to pick up in terms of the case of Tyndall. And with section twenty-two, it may be relevant that section, not just section twenty-two, sub-paragraph three, but six gives a wider.
Yes.
Aspects to section twenty-two, which we say would include on the facts of this case, not returning the child, but applying for a care.
Section twenty-two, six.
Twenty-two, sub-paragraph.
So section six. Well, that is a power, that absolves the local authority from.
Doing things that can't.
Doing things which are consistent with their duties under the section, if it's necessary to protect the public. That's what that means. So in other words, if you've got a child who's, who is behaving dangerously in, say, an emergency situation, you can accommodate him and treat him in a way which may not be consistent with all the duties under the section, the duties to protect the public being.
What is?
Being greater.
If it's set the duty in the section twenty to return the child to the parent, can that section, subsection not also apply to not returning the child to the parent?
Sorry, say that, say that again. We're in six, we're all looking at the right section, subsection six.
It may be that such more powerful.
No, there's a distinction. The distinction drawn, drafting of subsection six is between members of the public on the one hand, and the child who, who, who local authority are looking at. So, so you can't read members of the public as including the child, if that's your submission.
Well, that's, that's to protect the child. I think, I always thought that's to protect the public, for me, charge is a source of danger.
Just accept that that's a bad point.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
Sorry, the only other case I was going to go back to is X Y Hanslow, I think. Quite as an anecdote, the final stage of this case was that it did obtain a friendly settlement in Europe from the government, so in fact, the claimants, from the claimant's point of view, they got the damages that they were awarded.
How does that help us? What does it tell us as a matter of law as to whether or not this case should or shouldn't be struck out if there's a friendly settlement?
It doesn't.
Doesn't.
But also, that's not the point I was coming back at.
So my lady wants to make a point.
No, no, it's all right, don't, no.
Okay, so what do you want to say about it, this?
In terms of the head note, I think, my lady, then stop, page nine, six, two, in describing, it's top four lines down, that the further sentence is important, that if anyone had assumed such responsibility, it was T as the claimant's responsible social worker, but it had been correctly conceded that this, that she was not in breach of duty and had behaved impeccably throughout.
The problem of this is, they've already decided that nobody owed a duty of care, and they're saying, if we are wrong about that, and somebody did owe the duty of care, it would be T, but she of all people was the one who hadn't breached it. So how does that condition affect you or help you?
It's, the case didn't decide that there couldn't be an assumption of responsibility by a social worker who hadn't behaved correctly or behaved negligently. It found that the general, because the judge had found that the duty was owed by the local authority as a whole and didn't distinguish between the housing aspect of the local authority and the social services aspect of the local authority. And one of the arguments on the appeal was that they needed to be treated separately. There couldn't be this general duty that the, that they were in breach of, and that's why the judge's decision was overturned. The part that would be relevant to assumption of responsibility and to this case would be whether an individual social worker could have owed a duty of care.
And they said she didn't. And you only get to your paragraph, the one you've just shown us, if they were wrong about the finding that she didn't.
My lord, that's not as I understood of the decision. The decision was that the duty of the local authority as an authority, which the judge had found, was not an actionable duty of care. Had the case been put differently in terms of assumption of responsibility of the social worker, it couldn't have succeeded because this particular social worker wasn't in breach of duty. So it doesn't help us with whether she could have had an assumption.
Paragraph nine, sorry, I'm interrupting you, it's paragraph ninety-nine. The last sentence of which starts, if contrary to our view.
Yeah.
Miss X T assumed a responsibility to claimants of common law and owed a duty to them, she was not in breach of duty. My lord is entirely right. The principle, the ratio of this decision was that nobody owed a duty, but, but if contrary to that view, T'd, there was a breach. It's not clear for the head over, it's clear for nice line.
The reasoning that precedes her, I see paragraph sixty-five has been sidelined, that's on page nine, eight, two.
We looked, I think we looked at this.
Yeah, not so, I mean, that's a fairly general way of expressing their conclusion about the pleaded case. And then they go to say, we're going to look at the facts in more detail. Right, in particular, so where do they deal expressly with the submission that there was a?
I think it's necessary to start from ninety-one as to why they'd reached different conclusions from each judge.
We've got to start at ninety, we've taken the about from the Times flat major. The question is whether it's correct or not, those facts that the council assumed responsibility to the claimants. We answer that question in the negative. There was no one who assumed the responsibility of the kind referred to by Lord Hoffman in the Gorringe case. There was no one who fell within the categories identified by the House of Law. There was no one who created the danger. And then your ninety-four is, if contrary to the view that they've expressed, that anyone did, it was T, and she was the one person who'd done her job properly, and that's made clear in ninety-nine. So they, it's dead against you, Miss Gumbel. It finds that there was no duty, and what you should be doing is saying the context is very different, because that, again, is protecting from third parties outside the family, not that there was a finding that there was a duty owed by the social worker because she deceived responsibility.
My lord, I'm sorry, I wasn't seeking to say there was a finding that was a duty. I was saying that this case, in the end, the judge found the duty was a direct duty of the authority as a whole, because there was no individual, and therefore it's not a case about an individual relationship with a social worker on which there could be founded a breach.
But the problem with the judge, sorry to interrupt, Miss Gumbel, the problem with the judge's approach, as we see in paragraph ninety-one of the judgment called appeal, is that the judge didn't analyse the case, as well in which he was required to find that there had been an assumption of responsibility, first sentence of paragraph ninety-one.
He applied to power it.
Yeah.
As to the authority as a whole, rather than to any individual.
What does this case, as a matter of law, in your submission, hold that binds us, that's remotely relevant to your case?
Well, all I'm saying is, it doesn't help in saying that you can't have an assumption of responsibility with a, where there is a relationship between a social worker and an individual, because that's not what the, what the court, it doesn't rule out assumption of responsibility between a social worker, which I think is what my lady and friend would seem to take from it.
It's not an authority, or the proposition that you can't have assumption of responsibility where there is a relevant relationship between the social worker and the child.
My lord, yes.
And I suppose that point might be reinforced by the fact that the judge just didn't analyse it in that way at all, so the court appeal didn't have judge's analysis to consider.
And that's what we're seeking to establish here, it's not help. It doesn't help either way in that respect.
All right, so you're saying this is neutral as respects the point in this case?
Yes, and also that it is, again, closest to the CNN pool fact of being a housing case.
The context is pool, not indeed a breach within the family.
And it didn't even involve children, in fact, the children's cases don't be separate.
All right.
Those were all.
Thank you. Well, we're very grateful to you and to your juniors and to your instructing solicitors, for all your hard work in this, in this case. Of course, we're going to reserve, reserve judgment. We will, in due course, send out draft judgments for typographical corrections and corrections of factual error, minor corrections, not an opportunity, of course, to re-argue any aspect of the case. When you submit your corrections, please submit a draft order, and in this case, we'd be grateful that at that stage you would consider, if the appeal succeeds, the consequences in terms of the reinstatement of particulars of claims. Thank you all very much.